Please call all.
I'm here.
Councilmember Wright.
Here.
Councilmember Clay.
Here.
Councilmember Robinson.
Here.
Councilmember Seaman.
Present.
Councilmember Snapper.
Here.
Councilmember Schultz. Here. Okay. First thing is the additional agenda items. I will note that after the agenda was mailed, we had to pull the discussion of committees from the work session this evening to add a closed session at the end of the meeting, and we'll vote to go into closed session to discuss the Washington Adventist Hospital Certificate of Need process. Also, there's been some back and forth about when the Tacoma Junction Task Force report would get on the agenda. It was put on the agenda, it was pulled, and then it's back on again, so I just wanted to note that. Also, just for future meetings, next Monday, the 12th, the city manager will be out of town, and so Deputy City Manager Ludlow will be at the dais, and we'll have some work session discussions about sidewalk installation policy and discussion of Vision for City Recreation Services. The following Monday, September 19th, the city manager and the deputy city manager will be at a conference, and so the chief will be at the dais. And that evening we'll have --
That'll be funny.
That'll be different.
Funny.
That evening we'll have an update from County Councilmember Elrich. Councilmember Schultz had requested a presentation by the Enterprise Development Group on its micro lending program. We'll also have an update from the Police Department on the use of license plate scanners, and we are scheduled to have a continuing discussion of Vision for City Recreation Services Monday, the 26th. We may finally get back to the continued discussion of city committees, which I've had to bump twice. And then a reminder that Tuesday, October 4th, is the City Nominating Caucus. And then I'll note for the record that I issued two proclamations, one recognizing Recreation Director Deborah Haidiven, and the second one is a proclamation of September as National Preparedness Month. And you should have copies of both of those proclamations at your place. We'll now go to public comment period, and this is time for anybody who wants to make any comments on any item not on our voting agenda to make those comments, and if you could please identify yourself and keep your comments to three minutes, we'd appreciate it. And therefore it's?
Emergency Preparedness Month, National Emergency Preparedness Month. And I'm Kaye Daniels-Cohen, and coming here as President of SS Carroll Neighborhood Association and the Second Hat, a member of the Emergency Preparedness Committee. First, on a serious note, and I'm sure it may come up later in this meeting, I just wanted to take a moment to send condolences to the family of the gentleman who was killed on Saturday in a rather freaky electrical accident, I would say. And it was very sad and pretty shocking. I feel my heart went out to everyone who was involved, and it appeared that the city handled everything they could possibly in admirable order, so I just wanted to make that clear here. But, I'm here tonight as an Emergency Preparedness Committee member to mind you that September is National Emergency Preparedness Month, and reinforce the excellent article on page five of the September newsletter, in case you haven't seen it. It's how to be prepared for a hurricane. And it came out several days after the hurricane, but that's okay. You can be prepared for almost anything with what's in the article.
There's more coming.
There's more, yay! What you need to do first, and I'm just going to go over this one tonight, and then we'll keep going, because you're going to get me the whole month. You need to build a kit. And you all have, I gave you, and I know I gave these to you last year, but it doesn't get better than this, and this can go in your refrigerator. It's Plan Nine. It's the nine things that you need in your emergency preparedness kit. Water, one gallon per person for three days. So if you have five people in your family, it's 15 gallons of water at the minimum. Non-perishable food for three days. One change of clothes and footwear per person. Or you don't have to have that, but it's nice. Three days at least worth of medications, and don't forget your pets. You need to have pet medications, too. A bright flashlight for each family member. That's how we got through this last, rather, it wasn't that long. A manual can opener, and that's the one thing that when I talk to people, some people can't even spell manual can opener, they've never seen one. An electrical one won't operate if you don't have any electricity. You have to have a little hand-turned one. Battery-powered radio, toiletry soap, toilet paper, toothbrush, basic first aid kit. What was really refreshing during this particular lights-out was I got a call, two calls, as President of the Neighborhood Association, from Dan Robinson, my council member. I appreciated that updating me on what was going on within Ward Three, so I could get the word out, and he used two tin cans and a string, was about all I had. And also, a call from Mayor Williams, who also informed me about what was going on in the city. I appreciated the communication, and this to me was the first time that I'd ever seen that back and forth before. I could be wrong, but I hadn't really had that experience. And, in closing, I thank you all for the opportunity to be here and speak with you tonight, and I thank you for all that you do for the city of Tacoma Park.
Thanks. And while you're standing there, I have this copy of the proclamation for National Preparedness Month. Would you like to take this and share it back with the?
The committee?
Committee?
I would.
That would be fun. Are you going to read it tonight, or does it go to your vision minutes?
It's in the notes.
Thank you so much.
And right behind me is another preparedness person.
Kaye, may I ask you, are those boots part of your kit?
These are my boots for this kind of weather.
Oh, okay. Sorry.
Pig-swapping boots. I be the brother of Kaye Daniels-Cohen, 19 Sherman Avenue. I'm also here because it is National Emergency Preparedness Month to remind everyone that especially if the electricity goes off, you need a landline phone like this one. Most people believe I still have a rotary phone. It is true. But I bought this one at Radio Shack for about $14 about five years ago, and we did use this. And you also need, as Kaye said, a radio, this is a weather radio, batteries, and a For those of you, I do carry this stuff around with me all the time in my backpack. For those of you that know, you can also get a knife with a can opener on it, which can come in handy. As many of you know, emergency preparedness has been a passion of mine for a long time. It was exciting to see the city react in such a positive way to Hurricane Irene, even in the fate of almost all the city being without electricity and many trees being down with roads closed. It would seem that the Emergency Preparedness Committee's commitment to getting out preparedness information has really paid off. Say that fast enough times. I was especially happy to see the county not only opened a shelter at Richard Montgomery High School, as well as, as first, we think, shelter for people with pets at the Battle Drive Recreation Center. And I would also like to thank the council for the opportunity to speak to you, and for all of you for what you do for the community, and thank you again. Those are nice boots, aren't they?
Are you coveting our boots? Do you guys still live in the same house with those boots?
Man, it takes drugs.
Anybody else who'd like to make any public comments? Okay, thank you. We'll move to council comments. And I just wanted to start by thanking particularly the dedicated city staff who were available and getting out lots of information and going out into the community during Hurricane Irene. The police were out there, Public Works employees were out there, the arborist was out there all night as the storm came through, as trees were coming down. They were marking off where there were trees or wires down and making sure that people were aware of those and staying safe. And it was quite the effort to deal with all of those, because in the process, my understanding from the city arborist is that about 70 trees came down in the city. And my understanding is that only one city tree came down during the storm, and that that tree just glanced at residents and didn't, there was no damage from that city tree. So there was a lot of damage in the city, but they were all from trees that were on private property. I'll note that on the consent agenda this evening, we have some single reading ordinances awarding contracts for tree service for the city for maintenance, pruning, and tree removal, and that those contracts total $90,000. That's a significant outlay that the city makes every year toward maintaining public trees. And I know it can be a real financial difficulty for people to maintain trees on their property, and I know that the costs are high, but it's something that we all need to do. The trees are in many ways our residents of the city, just like we are, and we need to maintain everything in the city. I do know that there was one more tree, one more city tree that came down in Spring Park, I think in the last day or two, but as part of this latest rain and storm, not as part of Hurricane Irene. And thinking in general about the reaction of residents with Hurricane Irene, but also the terrible tragedy that befell the gentleman who was working and who was electrocuted on Saturday. I think people sometimes get a little nonchalant about trees, about power lines that are down in the city, and I saw any number of instances where residents were just kind of riding over them on bicycles, walking their pets through, in many cases they needed to get through. But I think this latest incident really points out that we all need to treat downed wires of any description with a greater amount of respect than I think all of us tend to do. We get a little complacent, and it takes a terrible tragedy like the gentleman who was electrocuted to remember that we really need to treat all electrical wires as down. In many cases, the Pepco workers who came out to work, there's a whole process in place where they have to get a firm commitment back from their central office that there is definite knowledge that a line has been de-energized before they'll go to work. And I think we all need to just assume that any wire that is down is live and treat it with the utmost respect. Also, just a reminder that I believe there's a state law that people in the state of Maryland are required to hire a licensed tree expert to deal with any tree that's greater than 20 feet tall. And I don't think I was aware of that particular aspect of the law. I knew that you were supposed to get a licensed tree expert to work on your trees, but I didn't know there was a 20-foot definition of what constitutes a tree that needs that. And I think we all have to just pay particular careful attention to working with trees, and I think the reason for that law is to protect people, because trees of that size can be dangerous and can hurt people. So there needs to be a lot of those protections in place. Just a couple other quick notes. The Tacoma Park Volunteer Fire Department is going to be having a 10th anniversary ceremony this Sunday, September 11th, and the public and my colleagues on the council are invited to attend. It's going to be from 8:30 to 10:00 in the morning at the fire station. They've chosen that time of day because they want to recognize and respect the time of day when the towers in New York were hit and came down, and so this is coinciding with that time during the morning. There's also, I understand, going to be a Washington Adventist University concert that evening at 8 o'clock, and I'll have more information on that as well, and people are invited to attend that. I just wanted to note very briefly the great attendance that there was at National Night Out at the beginning of August. I know that a number of my colleagues were there, and some of the people who, members of the public who spoke were there as well, and the governor was there, and it was a great turnout and a really wonderful event, and I look forward to more of those. And then, just, I'm assuming that Councilmember Clay will remind people that the Folk Festival is this Sunday, and she might give a few details. And I also wanted to remind people that the Street Festival is coming up, and I think that is October 2nd, first Sunday? Yes. So that is coming up as well. And I will turn to my colleagues for additional comments, and since some of our lights are working and some of them aren't, I'm just going to have to pick an order, and I'll go with Councilmember Robinson.
On the day of the hurricane, I came down here at 6:30 in the morning to the Police Department. Lights were out, trying to see what information I could glean, and Lieutenant Sipperly handed me a piece of paper with all the trees down in the city, all the wires down in the city, and all the streets that had been closed at 6:30 in the morning. That was very helpful to me. It was helpful because I was able to drive around town and see, to the extent that I could, where things were, and to call Kaye and other Neighborhood Association presidents in my ward, and reassure people, and that was, that's very much appreciated. That's the kind of emergency preparedness or proactive work that really heartened, was very heartening. And that was, that day was my spouse's birthday. Then you walk back a few days, it was the earthquake, that was my older daughter's birthday. And three days before that was my younger daughter's birthday, and on that day, I was with my younger daughter and my older daughter and my spouse and my son-in-law in Turkey, where we spent two and a half weeks on vacation. It was a great vacation. It was truly another perspective, so different from life here in Tacoma Park. We were in a kind of a tourist loop, looking at antiquities and spending time on beaches and that sort of thing. But I really got a sense, particularly in Istanbul and a couple other places, of the enormous vibrancy in that country, and almost chaos in the towns in Istanbul. There's so many people, and they're driving around at kind of terrifying speeds without much in the way of traffic guidance. But everyone gets around, and I just, I was thinking, I almost walked into City Hall there to introduce myself as a councilperson from a little town, and then I, they looked kind of daunting from the outside, so I didn't do it. But I guess I'm bringing back just a lot of memories. Not that it's going to, I hope it'll help me in my deliberations up here, but I just wanted to note that I had a great time, and it started a week of natural disasters when I got back. It's good to be back, thank you.
Councilmember Wright?
Thank you. Couple comments. One, I do want to remind my council colleagues I still do intend to bring forth resolutions related to secure communities, asking the governor to join other governors who have been leaders in this area, and asking that he not engage in the federal program titled Secure Communities. It actually makes us less safe. The second is a resolution around marriage equality, encouraging the governor to be fully supportive of marriage equality in the coming legislative session. The last thing I think that should come on the agenda, or we should talk about in the relative near future, is if we want to propose any referendum on the city ballot. This is something that we have an option of doing as the council. We can vote to put something as a referendum on the ballot. I think we should be very cautious in proposing a referendum, but they do, it does have the opportunity to ask the voter something directly that we think is important, and also has the potential to increase voter participation. One referendum in particular that I would like to consider looking at has to do with climate change, and whether we would want to put a referendum on the ballot, asking residents if they want to put something in the city charter that commits us to moving forward across the city government and encouragement of individuals and city businesses to reduce our greenhouse gas emissions. And I think that's a healthy discussion we should have, and what the specifics of that referendum would be, how specific we'd want to be in targets or not. So I'm going to put forth a proposal for a referendum we should consider on this topic, and I look forward to a healthy debate and discussion about it with my council colleagues, and would encourage them to think if there's any other referendum that they might want to put forward to be considered. Again, I think we should be cautious about what we put on the ballot for a referendum, but it is an interesting vehicle. Second, related to emergency preparedness, I do want to point out that the improvements that Washington Gas are making in the Penn neighborhood actually would allow people to get generators. So it will go from low pressure to, I think it's medium pressure natural gas, which would allow people, if they wanted to, to get natural gas generators for their house, that would take over if the electricity went out. My understanding is quite expensive to do that, but I'm going to research it for my own house, but it is a concrete improvement related to this upgrade that Washington Gas is making. Second, I just wanted to alert the city manager that the tree, there's a tree at the corner of Maple and Philadelphia. As you're crossing Philadelphia, going south on the eastern side of the, sorry, the western side of the street, the tree is obscuring the signal for pedestrians to tell, so the signal light for pedestrians about whether they can walk, or, so I think we should get that turned back. And then I have a question for the city manager, which you probably won't be able to answer tonight, but there was a tree removed from Maple Avenue in the right-of-way near Valley View, and it's peculiar because we've been having a lot of back and forth about having trees in the right-of-way that grow effectively under power lines. And we have many trees on Maple Avenue that have been topped and are the wrong kind of tree for the location, but this tree actually, I think, was the right type of tree. It actually had, was a multi-trunk, it grew up high, I don't think it was an overstory tree. And curiously, it was just, it was the one tree that was effectively growing around the power line, and now it's gone. I don't think it fell down or got hit by lightning, it looks like it just got sawed off, so if we could, if I could get some answers to that. And lastly, often we report on things that we saw on our summer vacations, and I again experienced this wonderful sign in Cape Cod, which I think we should institute here in Tacoma Park, which allows for a rotation of the events that are going on. So instead of having banners hanging on the railing or these kind of tattered signs at particular junctions, you can put in these, you can make them out of wood or metal, two posts that are of a uniform distance apart with a groove down it, down the middle, and you can simply put in two or three announcement boards that are painted on plywood. Can be very large, we could give people a standard size that they have to use if they deliver the boards to us and it's an appropriate event. We would put them up. It looks very nice, high quality, and I think would be a low-cost, great addition to how we announce the different events around Tacoma Park.
Councilmember Schultz?
I'm glad to be back, and I'm looking forward to a busy fall agenda and the upcoming election. Just wanted to say with regard to Hurricane Irene, to follow up on the mayor's comment and more or less second some of the things that he's said. Not only did our city police department and arborist seem to be more than up to the task, I was very pleased with their responsiveness. In the middle of all this, I did have a one-to-one conversation with our arborist, and he told me how he was working with Pepco. It took him a while to convince Pepco that he was offering the city's services to actually assist Pepco and not to create more labor for Pepco by sending his crews out to remove trees after Pepco had turned down the lines. And finally, he said, the light went off over Pepco's head, and they said, "Oh, you're going to actually help us." And it took a while to get that through, but he said, once they figured that out, they were delighted to know that they were going to give us tree removal assistance from city crews, which I found to be pretty amusing. But in general, it seems like Pepco did a far better job. I noticed in the Baltimore newspapers that Baltimore County, which is probably equivalent in dimensions to Montgomery County, didn't complete, the power company up there did not complete restoration of service to all of its customers until this past Sunday night, whereas Pepco was able to get it pretty much done by Thursday night, as they had said they would. I do have, the day after the storm, I guess that was Sunday, I did make the attempt to drive all the streets in my Ward Six to look around for all the downed trees that I could see. Fortunately, I think Ward Six was spared some of the drama that occurred in some of the other wards. We lost a total of 10 large trees in Ward Six alone, but only two of those did significant damage to private properties, one of which I'm going to be, and this is a comment to the city manager, providing an email to you with some questions about how and why this tree was not permitted to be taken down when the property owner requested that it be able to be taken down and to obtain a waiver, which they didn't get, and subsequently the storm took the tree down and did a considerable amount of damage to the property because it was rotten at the core, which was apparently not apparent. In any case, I think our response, the city's response, was terrific, and I compliment everybody on that. In the manner of speaking about our vacations, whereas Councilmember Robinson went to Turkey, I got to go to Wisconsin, so there, take that. And I went out there for personal reasons, because that's where my father's side of the family hails from. And one day, we were visiting Madison, which, Madison, Wisconsin, the capital of the state, city of about 200,000 people, where also is the University of Wisconsin. It's a beautiful city, and it has been, of course, Madison has been in the news this past summer, all the controversy over changes in state law, eliminating public unions from having the right to organize and negotiate, which has resulted in recall elections. But the thing that I wanted to, the story that I wanted to tell you is that in the middle of Madison sits the state capitol, a very huge building on a slight hill, dominates the city, and it fills a whole city block. And every Saturday, they have a farmer's market that fills four sides of that city block. And every Saturday, they have 300 vendors there, and their only qualification is that they need to be from the state of Wisconsin, told by vendors that many of them travel as many as eight hours to get there to sell their products. So there are something like 300 vendors there every Saturday, all day. And one of the things that was interesting to me is that this very huge square with all these vendors lining this thing is that they have it worked out where all the shoppers all walk in a counterclockwise direction around the block, just to eliminate chaos and confusion about people trying to shop and running into each other. And it's all very organized and systematic and tidy, and I was just amazed to think what an extraordinary thing that this is to have 300 vendors show up from so far away, and what a productive exercise it is for everybody. Not that this is something that we need to be able to try to do, it's just that it shows you, I guess, what can be done, and it can be done well, whether it's a small farmer's market like we have, say, at the crossroads, or one little larger than that. like we have on Laurel Avenue, or whatever. This is certainly emblematic of a huge movement in the United States towards locally-produced farmers' goods. So that was one of the highlights of my trip, and I'll tell other stories at a different time, but thank you very much.
Councilmember Clay.
Thank you. So a lot has transpired since we were last here together, and one of the things that has transpired is that I announced that I'm not running for reelection. I think that's out there in the general public, so I'm not going to dwell on it right now. If you, if you want to hear all about it, you can go to ColleenClay.com and see my, see all my reasons why I'm not running for reelection. And in the, since we're all talking about our vacations, one of the first things I said I wanted to do was spend more time with my kids. So my kids and I and my mother got on an airplane and flew to Hawaii for three weeks to get a jump start on our spending more time together after six years on the city council, a nine-year-old and 13-year-old, and we had a great time, and I recommend it for anyone who's interested in going, all kinds of things to do there. And while I was gone, there was an earthquake and a hurricane, which I'm happy to have missed, but it seems like the city weathered that well. Unfortunately, the gentleman that folks have spoke about already, whose name is Orlando Hernandez, died up the street from me in the electrical incident, and many of the neighbors and people in the community have expressed an interest in contributing to a fund, and I would like a little bit of assistance from the city to make the contact. So if, I think that's, is that the victim witness person? I wanted to find out who that is I should talk to. So I have a list of people who have said that they would like to make a contribution, and if you're interested in making a contribution, when I, when I get everything put together, I will send it out to you. You can send me an email at colleenc at tacoma.gov.org. Wires, so we're talking about wires down and how we should pay attention to wires. There are wires down, they're cable wires, I believe. They're the lowest hanging wires across the poles, and they're fat and bundled together. They're down on Central Avenue. When the residents first called me and said that none of the cable companies would respond, I thought they were talking about the wire that runs from the pole to their house, and I was like, oh, well, you know, it's broken, the only thing our police department will do, we'll take it out of the way if it's a problem. But I drove by anyway, because she'd asked me to drive by, and I drove by, and I was like, oh, no, the entire bundle of wires is down as it runs parallel to the street from pole to pole, so it's coming down across the ground and laying across. So I know that, I sent a notice, and I know the mayor has engaged on the issue, but those are still laying down there, and they can't get, there's like two or three properties, you can't get into the property without stepping over the bundle of cable wires. So on to happier news, the Tacoma Park Folk Festival is coming up on Sunday, and preparations are well underway. The city newsletter posted as its centerfold, the program guide, so if you live in Tacoma Park or in the 20912 area code, I believe, you've got one of these in your mailbox. And on the backside of it this year, we have a color-coded program guide, so we've color-coded all the stages to the map to make it much easier for folks to get around and find information, and we have highlights on the inside about various performers that we have. So I would like to encourage everyone to come, it goes from 10:30 to 6:30. Our theme this year is peace and reconciliation, and there's going to be a lot of peace music and activities and peace alley and different things, and we have T-shirts themed around these things and that sort of thing. We still need volunteers, we particularly need volunteers in the afternoon from noon to 6:30, and this year, if you volunteer, we have a water bottle for you, because we're trying to also be greener and reduce our paper cups and other, other things that we don't, we don't need to have, we all have reusable water bottles. So all the performers and all of the volunteers are getting aluminum reusable water bottles. So hopefully, that'll be nice for people, incentive to come and volunteer, it's a really good time, and I hope you'll join us.
Councilmember Snapper.
Thank you, Mayor. I too was out of town during the earthquake and storm on a family vacation. I jokingly refer to family vacations as when you eat five times a day. Eat, eat, don't you like me? You know, that's kind of what it is. But anyway, so I'm sure I put on five or six pounds just in two weeks. While I was away, I was very thankful for the email notices that Kathy Plebey and others of the police department and the city manager and others put out describing what was happening, as Dan noted, on a practically minute-by-minute basis. They were especially helpful at quite a number of people who were contacting me for information. As you know, Tacoma Park Flower Avenue was especially affected, took quite a while for the trees to be cleared and the electricity to be restored there. And during that time, I want to thank, I want to thank all of the residents of Ward 5, of course elsewhere too, I'm sure, who helped their neighbors with various problems during the storms, whether it was running an extension cord from one house to another, providing ice, use of the refrigerator, electricity, letting people take showers, you know, the various pet things, just lots of neighbor-to-neighbor stuff was very nice to see. Speaking of Flower Avenue, I want to remind my resident, excuse me, residents in Ward 5 that the Florida Avenue-Green Street project is, thank you, is really getting going, and the planning process will take several months, and during that time, residents will have an opportunity to participate, and I really hope folks will take advantage of that. The city has put together a really nice way of involving the community in the process of planning for the Florida Flower Avenue-Green Street. Finally, on a slightly more personal note, the three places I visited, Venice, California, Chicago, Chico, California, and Astoria, Oregon, I would say that only Astoria, Oregon has as vibrant a city and city government as we do, and even there, I could go into my differences about it, but it was very reassuring to talk to residents and politicians in these towns and get their take on it, and it made me feel pretty proud of Tacoma Park. Thank you.
Councilmember Siemens.
Thank you, Mayor. I may be one of the few people in Tacoma Park who didn't realize that we had an earthquake. I was driving across town in my car, got out, and everybody was saying, wow, that was really something, and I didn't feel it in the car as I was driving, so I don't know, maybe I've just confirmed some of the suspicions that my councilmembers, my colleagues on the council had about me. Anyways, I want to thank Kay for talking about emergency preparation again tonight. As we look at some of the natural disasters that we've experienced just recently and some of the threats that we continue to hear about terrorism, I think it's important for all of us to take a few minutes to just put some things away and be ready in case something does happen that actually affects our community. We've been fortunate with the earthquake and with the hurricane and many other things, that we haven't really been hit hard here in Tacoma Park. But if we look at communities like we saw up in Vermont, who also haven't been hit recently, and now they have been, it can happen anywhere, and although we all know that our government is going to take care of us in the event that something does happen, we also saw in Vermont that they don't take care of us right away, it takes them a while to get there, and when they do get there, I think all of us would like them to concentrate their efforts on the most vulnerable members of our community who really don't have the resources to prepare as well as some of the rest of us do. So again, I fully support Kay Daniels and her efforts to get Tacoma Park prepared, and of course, her sidekick buddy. And then lastly, I'd just like to mention that on September 15th, that's a week from this Thursday, I'm going to be holding a meeting of Ward 4 residents here in the community center in the azalea room, and I encourage people to come and talk about, you know, the good things that we have here in Tacoma Park and how we can celebrate those, but also what things they'd like to see better and how we can improve both Ward 4 and our city government. All right, thank you.
Okay, we'll move to the city manager's comments.
I'll be brief. Appreciate all the council comments, expressing the appreciation to staff for the hurricane response. We have started the process kind of by email, we'll be meeting later this month to sort of talk about, from a staff perspective, what went well, what didn't, what we could have done better, which is a typical action we take after an incident such as this. As you talk to your constituents or you think more about kind of how things went for those of you who were in town, if you have any comments, either personally or what you're hearing from your constituents, if you could please forward those to me, that'll be very helpful when I sit down with the various departments. At your places at the dais is the current change order proposal log from Keller Brothers, they are the contractor for the public works facility. Just wanted to share this with you, it's kind of an update from probably July, as I recall. The current status of the project is substantial completion has shifted to the middle of October. I'm looking at the look on Councilmember Schultz's face. As we had mentioned before, obviously, the rainy spring was a problem, clearly, the hurricane and the rains that we are going to have this week haven't helped the situation. There were some permitting issues, getting the appropriate permits from some of the utilities, and certainly things such as the Verizon worker strike, as brief as it was, certainly didn't help in getting, for example, connections for the fire alarm. I will be sending out tomorrow, I'd asked a contractor just to give me a letter, just sort of summarizing all these things, the number of days that were lost associated with those items, I will send that to the council tomorrow. I would say this contractor has been excellent to work with, these are things that were simply unavoidable, and the contractor truthfully has bent over backwards with issues that were really not within his scope of responsibility, and rather than just sort of standing back and saying, okay, I can't do this, really has worked with us throughout the past year to basically move pieces of the project around, and I couldn't say enough good things about Keller Brothers. Also, just wanted to share with the council, the pension issue, just very briefly, we did get all the forms in from the council members, have sent those off to the state retirement system, this affects six of the members of the council. For the two members of the council who will have served four years as of November, who are not, or four years or less, who are not vested and will not vest because of your decision not to run for reelection, at least the latest word we have from the state is you will not be required to make any contributions back to that time period, which was whenever you took office post 2004. So that's good news. We will obviously, once you leave the council, need to work with you to get your contributions that you have had deducted from your paycheck returned to you. For the other four members of the council that are impacted by this, the state has indicated that they will review the information submitted by staff, determine the amount that needs to be contributed retroactively by each of you, and they will be sending invoices. I have an email out to them to ask when those invoices will be sent, because there will be some time sensitivity to that. As soon as I get an answer, I will share that with you. And I think that's it, unless there's questions about anything.
Okay, I don't see any questions. Thank you. So we will move along to adoption of minutes. We have minutes before us for May 2nd and 9th, July, sorry, June 6th, 13th, 20th, July 5th, 11th, 18th, and 25th. Would somebody like to move adoption of minutes?
Move in second.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Have it. Minutes are adopted. We will now move to special session, and the first item on our agenda is a resolution recognizing and memorializing former corporation council of Vincent Gingrich. I just want to say that I noticed in the newspaper, and I guess it was the Washington Post, a while ago, the obituary for Mr. Gingrich recognized his name and wanted to make sure that we took the opportunity to express our condolences and our appreciation to the family, a number of whom are here this evening, and to let you know how much we appreciate the hard work and the long period of time Mr. Gingrich devoted to working for the city and being corporation counsel. I would like to read the resolution, and then we will vote to adopt it, and then we would like to recognize all of you who are here, and also ask if you want to make any comments, and then I have a formal presentation copy to give you. So first, let me read the resolution. Whereas Vincent Leonard Gingrich began his private law practice in Tacoma Park in 1944, where during the early years, he practiced aviation law, and whereas he later shifted his focus toward a general practice with emphasis on family law, wills, trusts, estate planning, probate, and real property, and whereas Mr. Gingrich served as corporation counsel for the city of Tacoma Park from 1950, and this is 1981, and I understand it might be 1983, and whereas during his tenure, he spent considerable time resolving many problems involved in the enforcement of the city's housing code, seeking to obtain compliance by persuasion rather than by confrontation and litigation, and whereas at that time, when citizens with other legal problems consulted the city clerk, it was not uncommon for the clerk to send them to the corporation counsel on a pro bono basis for advice and or resolution. And whereas Mr. Gingrich had a long history of service to the Montgomery County Bar Association and the Maryland State Bar Association, whereas he served as president of the Maryland State Bar Association from 1978 to 1979, and during his term, he established a statewide lawyer referral service, the lawyer counseling service, and a litigation section. And whereas in 1999, Mr. Gingrich received the Century of Service Award from the Montgomery County Bar Association, and whereas in addition to his many professional and civic activities, Mr. Gingrich was a member of the Tacoma Park Alliance Club for over 36 years. And whereas in 2005, at the age of 85, he retired from active law practice as a partner of the firm of Gingrich and Culpepper LLP in Silver Spring, and whereas Mr. Gingrich was born on October 25th, 1917, and passed away on April 18th, 2011, now therefore be it resolved by the council of Tacoma Park, Maryland, that the council recognizes the service provided to the city of Tacoma Park by Vincent Gingrich during his term as corporation counsel, as well as his many contributions to the legal community, and be it further resolved that the council expresses condolences to the family and friends of Mr. Gingrich upon his passing. Would somebody like to move the resolution?
Move.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any council comments before we go forward? Okay, if any of you would like to say anything, if you'd like to introduce who's here, we'd appreciate it, and if you just want to go there.
Okay, I'm Robin Gingrich-Frank, Vince's daughter, and I have with me this evening two of my daughters, Jennifer Wilson and Evelyn Frank, and then we have Martha Carafelli, who's also a resident of Tacoma Park, who worked for my dad for 42 years, and Glenn Culpepper, his partner, who started here in Tacoma Park with him before they moved to Silver Spring. And I want to thank the council very much for, first, Mayor, for you to have noticed the obituary, because we don't always read those parts of the newspaper, but thank you very much for noticing it and wanting to do this for him. It's a very nice honor, and our family really appreciates it very much. I thought I would just very briefly reminisce a little bit about growing up in Tacoma Park because I, I lived here until I was eight years old before we moved to Silver Spring. And when I was here, we, I was born, when I was born, we lived on Jackson Street, and then we moved to one of the big Victorians on Auburn, which I always called the Big House, and then we moved to the Apartments on Lee and wound up on Cedar Avenue. I think it's the second or third house on the left as you go on the bottom of the hill. But I remember very much Mayor Miller, who was the Miller, the mayor at that time, and a lot of the people active in the community. It was, it was a wonderful community. I remember the Hollands who ran the city newspaper, and they were always having little stories about all my birthday parties and all the trips our family did. When my dad opened his When my dad opened his law office, he was in with Ralph Shore, who of course later became a judge in Montgomery County. I know my dad enjoyed, his office was on Carroll Avenue at that intersection, and he would have lunch with Carl Crusay, who was the Ford dealer across the street, and I remember the pharmacy that was there, and I remember spending Saturday afternoons going through the Woolworths that was in that little shopping strip across from the church. I also remember my dad bringing home pies from the Electric Maid, it was right under his office. I guess if you smell them all day, you got to bring something home. Also, I know they were close with the Youngblood family, who, the hardware store, that's no longer there, on the other side of the metro tracks and the train tracks. And also, he was a good friend with Bob Lor, who was a realtor in this area that many of you may have heard of. And I remember Ralph Seidel riding his unicycle in the Fourth of July parade, and I think, did his son take that over? I thought I might have heard that, but I don't know if anyone does that anymore. But anyway, those are just some of my nice memories of growing up in Tacoma Park. Glenn, did you want to say anything? Thank you again.
Thank you. Glenn Culpepper is my name. It's been a lot of years since I've been in this room and sat through a council meeting. I think through two regimes, the Miller and Sam Abbott's, which were quite different in approach and administration. I would observe that by this time, at eight Columbia Avenue meetings, we would have long since vacated the council room and be well through the first session of beer and sodas and pretzels and peanuts at Dusty Rhodes' house, who was the director of Public Works.
By 8:30.
By 8:30. I marvelled at the mayor's comments about the public participation and holding that to three minutes if possible, and I see that you have a reminder here. I don't think Mayor Miller would have ever figured out a good reason for any citizen or resident to speak for as long as three minutes, and Mayor Abbott would see no reason to limit them to three minutes. We were city attorneys for, I joined him in 1968, right out of law school, and I had a lot of wonderful years with him before he retired in 1985. He was a most principled and generous and caring and Christian person, and he practiced law that way, and he dealt with his responsibilities as a city attorney that way as well. I never really saw him overtly angry, but you could tell when he was upset or miffed about something, his Pennsylvania Dutch background, he would, he could set his jaw with the best of them. And I remind, but even when he was upset, he managed to express his feelings in a fairly eloquent and guarded manner. I remember one time in particular where we had a fairly young and animated city administrator who called us on the carpet and literally called us into his office to reprimand Vince and I for writing an attorney opinion to the mayor and council that the city administrator did not approve first and would not have approved, and frankly, that's the reason we didn't send him a copy. But he kind of ended it with very strong tongue-lashing to us for doing that and not going through him, and Vince said, "Well, as far as I know, I serve at the pleasure of the mayor and council, even if that means the displeasure of the city administrator." He did religiously attend his Lions Club. He would leave the office and, not saying he's going to Lions Club, he said he's going to roar.
Going to roar.
Martha, which I don't know if she will say anything, she joined Vince, I joined him in 1968, so I was assistant city attorney for about half of his tenure. Martha, I think you were with him maybe two or three years or so before I joined him. Mayor Miller was a very genial gentleman. When I joined Vince, I rode a motorcycle and had long hair and a full beard in '68, and, but I would come to the city meetings, council meetings, on a motorcycle and a double knit suit, and Mayor would, just first time he introduced me, he said he's just our hippie assistant city attorney. The meetings I said with Mayor Miller were fairly short. Under Mayor Abbott, they were fairly extended. But Vince always took his job and his responsibilities very seriously. There wasn't any citizen telephone call or drop-in in our office, which is the same place where Susan Silver has her office, so that's been kind of city attorney's squatting area for a lot of years, but he would never refuse an audience or spend a half hour with the citizens on the phone or if they dropped in the office. And I know that he devalued that time and that experience, and I think he served the
We certainly are happy to recognize those who contributed to the city and where we are today, and just want to let you know how much we appreciate and honor his work and your support of him in doing that, and it's always interesting to get some perspective from people who can speak to times when most people who live here today weren't here and to recognize where we came from, and it's a real pleasure to have you here, and I'd like to bring this out to you.
Should I come up there? Or do you want to come down here? I'd like to take a picture.
And, if you'd be interested.
Thank you. It's, I've been a former person for 44 years. I've done a lot of things, good and bad. Right now, I kind of want to leave the table.
And the next item is our consent agenda. We have single reading ordinance, authorized purchase of in-car video cameras. As I mentioned earlier, the three ordinances awarding a contract for tree services, and a resolution supporting community investment tax credits for mobile medical care. Would somebody like to move the consent agenda? Oh, Councilmember Siemens, do you have a request?
Yes, I would like you to pull A, please.
Okay. We have pulled item A. We'll address items B, C, D, and E in the consent agenda. Did I hear a move in a second?
Moved.
So seconded.
Okay, that's been moved and seconded. All those in favor of the consent agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
Oh, sorry, it's a roll call, it's a single reading. Please call a roll.
Mayor Williams.
Aye.
Councilmember Wright.
Aye.
Councilmember Clay.
Aye.
Councilmember Robinson.
Aye.
Councilmember Siemens.
Aye.
Councilmember Schultz.
Aye.
Okay, that has passed, and we will now move to item A. Councilmember Siemens.
Thank you, Mayor. I was just interested in receiving more information about this. I know at budget time, we had talked about approving the money for this item, but I'd like to hear more about exactly what the technology is and how it'll be used and how it'll be monitored.
Mr. Siemens, this is just a continuation of the program that we've already been doing with the Panasonic Arbiter Video Camera Systems that we're currently using. Right now, we have 15 of them deployed in the vehicles. They are tied into our mobile data computers. They operate when automatic switches are hitting the cars, whether it's a signal from the lights being activated or the officer turning it automatically. It records the event that the officer turns the lights on for, then stop it at the end, classify the information as evidence or not evidence. All of that is stored on a server that's provided to us by the county. All of it's done wirelessly, it's all uploaded. It's fairly automatic, the officers don't have to do much to make it all happen. It's pretty much done automatically for them. Once it's stored, they can then use it in court. The state attorney's office has direct access to it, so they don't come to us for any sort of information. They pull it off themselves, provide it in the courthouse. So for us, it's a relatively easy system. It doesn't require any maintenance on our part. We don't pay for the server space, we don't pay for software. The only thing we're paying for is the hardware upfront, and then after that, the county takes care of everything else for us.
Okay, Houston's evidence in criminal proceedings.
We also use it in internal affairs investigations. We've used it for reviews of different things, whether they be pursuits, use of force investigations. Anytime that there's relevant information captured by the system, we'll use it in those proceedings as well.
Okay, and I know that some officers are concerned that it's, could be an invasion of privacy, too. Is that, is that in fact the case?
I suspect that there's always going to be somebody who feels that way. The way that the system is set up, we don't use it in that manner. We don't spy on officers, we don't review the information without cause. We will use it for training information if necessary, but the system is essentially self-controlled in that there's no sound being recorded in the car until they activate the system, and then there's a 30-second delay before the sound comes on, so the officers always know when the sound is being recorded and when it's not. They have microphones that can be muted at any time they need to, so there's no invasion of privacy. The unions agreed to the system, and we essentially have in place an agreement that mirrors the Montgomery County Police Department's agreement with their union in terms of how it's operated on our end.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
And if I can just add that this is something that certainly a number of members of the council, a number of years ago, were very interested in seeing happen, and so.
And I fully support.
And so we're happy that this is in place, because I think it's protections for everybody.
So move the ordinance?
Okay.
Seconded?
It's been moved and seconded. Any further council comments? Any public comments? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oh, sorry, single reading. Please call a roll.
You've got my aye.
Aye.
Councilmember Wright.
Aye.
Councilmember Clay.
Aye.
Councilmember Robinson.
Aye.
Councilmember Siemens.
Aye.
Councilmember Clark.
Aye.
Okay, that passes unanimously. We have one remaining item, which is a work session discussion of revisions to Tacoma Park Ethics Code, and so we have the Corporation Council here, and let me just say in starting this off, that I know that this is something that is a change in the state law, and it's something that we have to address in a timely fashion, because we are required to have come into compliance, to certify that we're in compliance with the change in state law by October 1 of this year, and I know that I've been a part of a number of discussions that have taken place at the Maryland Municipal League, among a number of our colleagues in other municipalities in the state. I know there have been a number of concerns about what this does, how it, how it works, and I know that there are a number of municipalities in Prince George's County who are going to ask for waivers. I don't really see how people can argue against strengthening an ethics ordinance, but there are a number of people who have talked about objecting to it. And I also got at the Legislative Committee meeting last week, a handout, if anybody's interested in seeing it, I can, I can probably scan it and send it as a PDF. It's a database of the, all of the municipalities in the state, and it shows those which are exempt because they are small enough. It's also an interesting ranking of all of the, just all municipalities in the state by size, and it shows that as of the time of this, which was July 1, 2009, that the city of Tacoma Park was the 13th largest municipality in the state out of 157, so it's just interesting to see basically who is under this ordinance and who isn't. And so with that, I'll turn it over to Mr. Sigmund, and you can walk us through the changes and what we need to do.
Okay. You're right as to why we're here. It is a state law requirement that the city's law, ethics law becomes equivalent to the state law requirements for both conflicts of interest and financial disclosure for elected officials. Fortunately, our ethics ordinance has had a fair amount of attention over the years, and there aren't many changes that need to be made with respect to conflicts of interest. Financial disclosure, that's the big area of change. Previously, elected officials and candidates were required, like staff members, only to disclose gifts that they've received from people doing business with the city, and now you'll be required to make pretty extensive personal financial disclosures on issues such as business interests, you hold sources of earned income, real property interests, debts that you owe to businesses that do business with the city. Too much detail to discuss tonight, but certainly anybody who has to file a financial disclosure statement's going to want to take a close look at the requirements and make sure they comply. In addition to the state required changes, the Ethics Commission, in the process of looking at those, raised a few issues that they've discovered could use some improvement, mainly with their process for handling complaints and advisory opinions. The changes that they've requested is, they'd like a clear process for the publication of advisory opinions, because I think it would be more valuable to both officials and residents to see how the process works and to see what the Ethics Commission's opinions are. So they've asked that they notice be published in the newsletter with a summary, and then that their opinions be available on the city's website. They've also asked for subpoena power so that they can do more effective investigations if they're not getting cooperation during a complaint. And they've also asked for the express authority to initiate complaints if they come across information that they think is a troubling violation that they think they need to address. And now some, some highlights affiliated with the state law changes. There's one change regarding gifts. It's a clarification that prohibition on soliciting gifts from people that do business with the city includes soliciting charitable donations. And then there's also one change for personal gifts. It used to be kind of a blanket exception that if you get a gift from somebody who you have a personal relationship with, for example, you've lived next door to your neighbor for 30 years and are good friends, they can give you a gift, even though they might have some piece of legislation they're interested, or they may run a business that deals with the city. Now you actually have to come to the Ethics Commission and say, "This is the situation, this is the person giving me this gift, is it okay?" and get specific approval.
Regardless of value?
No, I mean, there's, there's.
Does the $25 threshold still hold, or is it regardless of value?
For the, I think that the dollar limit applies across the board unless you feel that somebody's giving you a gift with the intent of influencing you. So no, a token gift like that from somebody you know would not be an issue.
I really thoroughly support this. I really like the changes in this. I do have a few very tiny corrections which I'll hand you. I'm a big fan of distinguishing between that and which, particularly in legal documents, and some similar things. But I have a couple of actual substantive questions. On page eight, I, kind of in the middle of the page there. It's written as if there's only one hearing. Is it possible that there would be more than one hearing? And do you need to consider that? It says following a hearing.
I mean, I say we've never had a hearing as long as I've been here. Certainly, they'd have the authority to carry over a hearing. I don't know that we need to give them express authority to have multiple hearings, but I don't think that there'd be any problem adding that to the ordinance as well.
I just wanted to... It's more a question of whether that's restricted. It's only one hearing. On page 11, at the very top, point number three. This is as written. It says, "A person who formerly held a position covered by this chapter may not," and then they explain what they may not do. And there is no time limit on this prohibition. So it's a lifetime prohibition, as written as I understand it.
Right, well, I think it depends. The key word is there is "the matter." So I think the reason there's no time limit is the thinking is if you worked on a specific project, it doesn't mean it matters if it's six months or two years. You shouldn't work on that in a private capacity. But I hear your concern that if you read "matter" very broadly, it could keep you working on an issue that's important to you and probably barely related to what you did with the city.
Which page is that?
Page 11, top of page 11. The concern I have is the federal government has similar prohibitions, and they tend to do one-year, five-year, lifetime limits, depending on kind of what it is, so that very small matters aren't subject to a lifetime limit, for example. But if you were the primary person, for example, negotiating a contract or something like that, then that might warrant a lifetime limit. Somebody who develops a drug and then goes to work for a drug company, you know, that would be prohibited under a lifetime limit. But if it's something where someone is more marginally involved in the matter, and the matter isn't especially important, then you don't have a lifetime limit.
Right. No, I'd be happy to try to address that if you could send me the federal regulations you have in mind. That would be helpful.
Okay. On page 13, number three, permissible gifts. The third line down has the word "might." I was a little surprised that we have the word "might" in there. Unless any such gift might tend to impair the impartiality and independence. I'm not sure you want "might" there. I mean, unless a gift... I mean, you already have "tend" in there, so it's already 10 to that.
Would tend.
I think something to think about.
Okay.
Then G on that same page, this is another question here. This is permissible gifts. And gifts from a person you have changed from an immediate family, child, ward, or other relative over whose financial affairs the covered person has legal or actual control to a broader, in my view, group because it includes an employee. So you'd have, you could have like a maid or something like that who was living with the employee, or a personal assistant or something like that, and is that...
Sorry, the employee in both instances where it's used in that sentence refers to city employees, so it's city official or city employee.
I got it, okay. Thank you. Page 16 at the top, number three. You gather some information. If an individual examines or copies a financial disclosure statement, and you direct the commission to record the name and address and the name of the person whose financial disclosure statement was examined, I'd like to add the date.
Okay.
On page 26, this is my last one, despair. On page 26, under 4B V, three I's, I guess that's an eight. Other gifts to or for officials or employees or their spouses, et cetera, et cetera. Is there some reason why the group of people here is different than qualified relatives, which is a defined group? In other words, what is the thinking behind changing from qualified relatives to this? If there, if this... I mean, you don't have to answer it now, Ken, but give it some thought. It puzzled me why I switched the, you know, you carefully laid out who qualified relatives were, and they come pretty close to that.
Right. Now, there's two defined terms. For family, there's immediate family and qualified relative. This one uses neither defined term. I mean, I know the context here is the, I believe this is the lobbying activity report.
Right.
I'll give some thought as to whether we should use one of the defined terms. I mean, the difference might be that normally it's the employee that's thinking about their qualified relative and their, or their immediate family member, and I'm not sure lobbyists would necessarily know who fits in that category for the elected official or the city official that they're dealing with. I'll give some thought to see whether we should use a defined term.
Thank you. And I'll give you my copy because I have a few other very small ones.
Councilmember Ray.
So my question has to do with the financial interests that have to be disclosed, the financial disclosure form. Is this part of the, what we have here, part of what's suggested in the state's draft ordinance?
Yes.
First, I want to say I'm fully supportive of strengthening the ethics rule, and I think a lot of it is helpful. I do have concern about this section in the sense that I think what we're after is things where people could have a conflict of interest, or it could be clear that there's some issue where someone could have influence that would in some way impact some way that they could benefit or that the corporation. And so the way I read this, if you held a common stock regardless of its value, you would have to basically declare that. And you might hold, you know, 0.2% of Microsoft. Clearly, you're not going to really benefit from whether the company decides to use Microsoft or Linux or something like that in its contracting. And you could think of many situations like that where, and then you're, but you're basically requiring and asking people to disclose a lot of their financial information about their withholdings, which is A, time-consuming, and B, I think then becomes a matter of public record, right? Like, the Ethics Commission doesn't hold it in confidence. Someone could FOIA it or ask for it. And my concern would just be it's putting another burden on people who are thinking about holding office, which in many ways is a relatively thankless job and might discourage people from running for office. So I just think we have to think about the burden that we put on and whether it really prevents or causes any ethical issue. And it sounds like from this mutual funds are excluded, right? Because that's considered part of a group holding or trust or, I forget the exact language in it, but common stock would not be, correct?
Right. No, I hear you. It is, as I said, much more burdensome, and, you know, this rule applies to the largest county, right down to, not the smallest municipality, but certainly municipalities of a reasonable size where, you know, you don't have as simply as much money involved in the transactions that the city's involved in. So, but the state has given this as kind of a one-size-fits-all approach.
And is this particular element required in the state law, or is it just part of...
It is.
It is required in the state law. With this specific language, or is there any flexibility around it? Could you write that people have to declare things that could potentially have conflict of interest or be looking for undue influence on the city or something around those lines? Or do we have any flexibility in that?
I don't know of any flexibility on these requirements. The, as you can imagine, the State Ethics Commission is pretty busy these days reviewing these things, but I can try to get some feedback on...
My sense from hearing concerns by other municipalities is that that's one of the main concerns that they had, and the sense that I've gotten in answers back from MML staff and from the municipal attorneys is that they don't think there's much ability to get, to be particularly flexible in that area.
I mean, we have to declare much of this as federal employees, but if I'm working at the Treasury Department, I actually might make a federal policy that would have an impact on Goldman Sachs or JP Morgan. So it sort of makes sense that I might not hold one of their stocks or it would be held in a blind trust or something, but it just seems odd and maybe burdensome at this level of government to have all aspects of this hold true. But if, I mean, I guess one of the advantages it'll give the, the Ethics Commission would be the ones reviewing the documents, correct, to determine if we've filled them out properly or that they've met the requirement here? Is that right?
Right. I mean, as the Ethics Commission pointed out, it's hard to know what's not there. You know, it's hard to know something's missing.
Well, it'll give the Ethics Commission something more significant to do, I guess, than we've had for them to do so far.
No, definitely. Definitely.
But there actually will be a function that they have to, a substantial function they'll have to take into account.
And a reminder just about the process by which this became law. It was, I believe, one of the primary sponsors was Senator Raskin, and the leadership was also primary sponsors, and when it came before the legislature, it passed without a dissenting vote in both houses.
I'll remember to talk to Jamie about it when I see him.
Councilmember Schultz, and then Councilmember Siemens, and I have some questions as well. Councilmember Schultz.
My instinct is to, you know, say, "Hooray, let's approve this because, you know, the more ethical regulation we have, the better, because it can't do any harm." But, and that's just sort of my general instinct. But in trying, and I haven't read this before I sat down at this dais today, so I'm not going to be able to cite chapter and verse, but glancing through it, there's parts of this, when I'm trying to read it, I find it difficult to understand. And my concern is, is that any law, whether it's at the state level or this level here, that's written in a way that's difficult for people, affected people, whether it be the candidates for public office or elected officials, people who are already in office, they don't understand it, or the person that's supposed to be available to explain it doesn't do, or is not in a position to really be able to explain it in layman's terms. That, to me, is a recipe for the ordinance being ignored or to be misunderstood or not, or out of pure innocence not being properly followed. And I'll go so far as to say everybody up here is going to want to properly follow the ordinance so that they don't transgress the requirements here. I doubt anybody has any incentive to do otherwise. But for example, I'm looking at page 15 where it says, "A candidate to an elected official shall file a statement required under this section." So this section refers to somebody who's running for office, not somebody who is in office. Is that correct? On chapter, page 15, chapter, paragraph two at the top.
Right. Well, the same statement, the same contents are required of candidates and elected officials.
Right. And it says, "In this, in the year, and in the year, the certificate of nomination is filed no later than the filing of the certificate of nomination." I wouldn't have a clue as to what a certificate of nomination is unless there's a set of definitions in here somewhere. And sometimes people don't nominate themselves until we have our nominating meeting in November, and am I supposed to come to that meeting with a certificate in hand in case I get nominated? And I'm just saying is that I'm not asking you right now to answer that question. I'm posing it.
Can I just interject here for a second, since I had a question of the city clerk about this earlier today, and she might just provide a little bit of information to clarify that?
But my point isn't to get clarification. I mean, I'd love to get clarification, I guess, but my larger point simply is, is that we want to be able to have this thing cast in terms that are as easily understood as possible. So this section refers to somebody who's running for office, not somebody who is in office. Is that correct? On chapter, page 15, chapter, paragraph two at the top.
Right. Well, the same statement, the same contents are required of candidates and elected officials.
Right. And it says, "In this, in the year, and in the year, the certificate of nomination is filed no later than the filing of the certificate of nomination." I wouldn't have a clue as to what a certificate of nomination is unless there's a set of definitions in here somewhere. And sometimes people don't nominate themselves until we have our nominating meeting in November. And am I supposed to come to that meeting with a certificate in hand in case I get nominated? And I'm just saying is that I'm not asking you right now to answer that question. I'm posing it.
Can I just interject here for a second? Since I had a question of the city clerk about this earlier today, and she might just provide a little bit of information to clarify that.
But my point isn't to get clarification. I mean, I'd love to get clarification, I guess, but my larger point simply is, is that we want to be able to have this thing cast in terms that are as easily understood as possible. Because oftentimes, people who are considering elective office have never been in elective office before. They've never had to consider the possibility of being held responsible for financial disclosure because of the nature of their career, let's say. So that's my only request, that that be given a very high priority in any in this ordinance. I just doesn't seem to be jumping off the page to me with clarity. Now, if the city clerk wants to answer that, I'd be pleased.
Well, I don't have an answer. We, I don't have one. Because of our compressed process here in Tacoma Park with the, we have no, a candidate is not officially a candidate until that nominating caucus. Although, there are people who are candidates now, but they're not officially candidates until that nominating caucus. So somehow, we're going to have to make this fit our more compressed deadline, because there's no way to, just looking at the deadlines here, we have, basically, it's five weeks from the time there is a candidate until the election. So somehow, we'll need to put our heads together and make sure this timeline, we can fit this into the timeline that we have to exist under. Does that make sense?
Yes. Jesse, I'd be happy to work with you to, because I'm much more familiar with the election process than I am, to make sure these requirements fit the election schedule.
Right.
And we certainly have that flexibility.
Right. And but I would assume that anyone currently on the council who will be a candidate for council will be required to file the candidates, that financial disclosure that any candidate would have to. So because
We don't know if we're going to be able to get two people to nominate us. We don't know the word candidates to the nominating caucus.
That's absolutely right. So you don't know when
Therefore, there's a compressed timeframe for actually putting this together and filing it.
Right. That's right.
And that will be applicable in a very short period of time.
Right.
It seems to me that the solution of this is to put time, time windows of time in here that within a certain number of days, such and such a thing be filed. I don't know what that'd be, 30 days or what. But putting together some of these, if maybe for some person, they can do it on the back of an envelope. For somebody else, it might take considerable amount of thought, particularly since one hasn't, will never have seen the financial disclosure form until the day they pick it up, at least the new one.
And can I just point out that that financial disclosure form and the instructions for what is necessary will need to be available at the nominating caucus to give all of the nominated candidates so that they can file it, and that's coming up in
And they can't leave the room until they do, right?
No, they can
It doesn't say that.
There will have to be something in there that says when they have to have filed it by, and that certificate of nomination, since I don't think we use that, we'll have to have something different.
Well, it's possible we can make the implementation date of this after the current election, because to get all of this done
I don't
No, we're supposed to have it have it
We have to have it in effect October 1.
Just be glad they're not making it retroactive.
Councilmember Siemens.
Well, a lot of good questions been asked. Thank you, Mr. Siemens, for the work you've put into this. I suspect tonight's not the first time you've looked at this. You obviously have put in a great deal of thought in preparing this, and appreciate that. And I think that tonight's questions just highlight how complex this is. I certainly support this in concept. I think the devil's in the details, and I'm sure that we can work those things through. And I think we have a compressed timeframe to get that done in, and that's part of the concern that I have. Anyways, I think one of the things I like about it is that it applies not just to council members. We, of course, have focused on that, because that's us, but it also is important for employees too, the city staff too, right?
Yes. Not the detailed financial disclosure requirements.
But the rules themselves are applicable to city employees. And I think that's a real improvement over what we've had with our ethics policy in the past. It's, it really broadens the scope of what we cover. I guess one of the, I'd just like to ask one small detail. Right today, under the current policy, if I was to have a question or want an opinion from the Ethics Commission, I could submit a written request for an opinion. But there is no requirement or ability for me to ask for a hearing to discuss that with the commission itself. The commission would and could make their ruling without a hearing. And I just wondered if that is different in this new policy.
No, it's the same policy. I mean, I think the Ethics Commission would come to you, I mean, the more information you provide to them, the better the opinion they can give. And, you know, I think if they had questions, they would come to the person who's asking for the advisory opinion. But no, there is no hearing.
My experience with that is that, you know, they came back with questions, but there wasn't a good interaction where they, where I felt they understood the situation clearly. And that, I think, you know, in the future, there ought to be some way for a council member or any other, any city employee, anyone asking for an opinion ought to be able to request a hearing. And strictly in the, you know, with the aim of having that communication, the interaction that's necessary for the board or the commission to thoroughly understand the situation.
Right. I'm just, I'm not sure how that would fit with the concept of the advisory opinion, because they're really not making findings of fact. They're assuming everything that they're told is true, which, that's how it differs from a complaint, where they're trying to figure out exactly what has happened. But here, they're just trying to answer questions when somebody says, is my situation? Can I do this? Can I vote on this? And
Well, maybe it just leads me to do better writing than
Can you just find a chance to argue face to face with somebody?
Okay. I'll accept that. All right. Thank you. That's all.
Okay. I've got a couple of questions, and I think Councilmember Wright could, some additional My, we've talked about this a little bit, but I just, I want to just revisit it for a second. My sense is that because we need to have this in place by October 1, that we aren't supposed to then make it have a delayed effective date, that it's supposed to be in place and going by October 1, and that it then gets submitted to the state, and they review it to make sure, but because of the fact that everybody has this deadline with all of these jurisdictions turning stuff in, that they're not going to get back to us immediately and say, you know, yes, you're good, or no, you need to tweak this, that, and the other.
I forgot to mention this. I did send a draft, essentially what you all had before you, to the Ethics Commission in July.
The State Ethics Commission?
Yes.
Okay.
And they're meeting on September 15. And I'm hoping to hear back reasonably soon after that.
Okay.
You know, based on my experience, I believe we're going to be, I don't think we're going to be required to have any changes from this draft.
Right. But it's, but it's, but this process is not, I don't think, going to give us the flexibility to say, oh, but these, you know, these, it doesn't like, it doesn't affect this election that we have to get things in order for this coming election.
Right. I think we should have everything in place, whether the State Commission gets around to giving us final approval by then.
Okay. I had a couple of small questions that I can run through on pages real quick, and then I'll just get to my larger question that I'm not quite sure of the answer to. On page three, I want to get a clarification on C up at the top. The added language, and all persons engaging in lobbying of city officials. I almost felt like that got injected into the wrong place, that if you go up to the middle of that sentence, to accomplish these goals without unduly restricting the rights of the officials and employees and their families. And then it should say, the added language of, and all persons engaging in lobbying of city activities. And then for that group, to associate freely, speak freely, et cetera, et cetera. Because that hanging bit at the end there just kind of doesn't connect with anything. So I think that's what you wanted. Page seven, at the top, in letter I, and at the end of the first line, at its the, if you just eliminate its.
Yeah. Yes, thank you.
Page 15, there's another one, little one like that, 2A up at the top, no later than the filing rather than that. And I want to get clarification. I think this is my perpetual question when we go through the changes to the ethics ordinance at 17, at the top, 2A, interests in corporations and partnerships. And this is in the, which section is this? This lobbying? No, financial disclosure. Include a schedule of all interests in any corporation. And interests in the definition, I think, said something about legal interest. It's not just financial interest. And so I'm wondering the scope of what needs to be included in that. And my examples that I thought of off the top of my head on that were where I'm on the board of directors of a corporation. I don't have any financial interest, but I have legal liability. And do I, do I need to file that? So it's kind of the question where you get into these things of not just, even though it's in the financial disclosure section, it's a legal interest, because that's in the definition.
Right. Certainly, that's an interest for purposes of conflicts of interest.
Right. So what I was thinking of was the Silver Spring Tacoma Thunderbolts, and then the ones like the Tacoma Park Fire Department, and then it's like you get into associations like MML, MMA, those kinds of things. And I think the answer in the past has been that no, because you're, for some of those, that you're acting as an agent of the city. I'm not sure that's a technically correct term, but you're, you know, you're there because you're an elected official. And so you don't have kind of technical, legal interest or liability in something like that, even though you're on the board. Where the council of government's where you're on the board of directors. So those kinds of directorships, which have, in the end, responsibility, but they're kind of connected with the office. So just wanting to make sure that we have clarity on which ones get included and which ones don't.
Just looking at the definition of interest.
Right.
And that interest is the term used in the disclosure requirements. I don't see how that would cover the types of positions you described or the
And I think not, but it again brought the question, just because it says interest means any legal or equitable economic interest. So I just wanted to kind of get that out there again.
I think that would just mean like different types of ownership interests, not
Okay. And then my larger question that I went into this having, and I thought from the discussions that I had heard, that it wouldn't be an issue, then I kind of thought it would, and then as I read through, I thought it wouldn't be. In looking at changing in the definitions, basically, instead of using where we used to, immediate family member, going to qualified relative, and looking at the fact that we include in those definitions domestic partners, and I was part of the effort in the early 90s to make sure that we changed in all of our laws and code and everything that we were including domestic partners. And it was a whole issue about definition of family. And where I was thinking about it in this was, in this day and age, where we are right now, is that kind of domestic partnership isn't good enough. There's the push for marriage equality, recognizing that the federal government associates, I don't know, what is it, 411 or 711, whatever it is, benefits and rights that go along with marriage. And so wanting to be sure that I understand where in this, the accountability and responsibility lie with somebody who is a member of my household, who is my domestic partner, but not my husband, where if there is something that is reportable in terms of financial interests, whether by including domestic partnership in all of the definitions, whether we're going where basically federal and state law don't go yet, in equating a domestic partnership or a marriage of same-sex partners. My concern, when I was first thinking about this, was I asked folks at MML whether the state law would require reporting on any of this for domestic partners, and they said no, because it's not part of the law. Whether we, in wanting to insert domestic partnership in all of the definitions where it may not have to be there, whether that then puts a financial or a reporting burden that isn't required to be there. It's like, do I end up not getting the rights and benefits that come with marriage from the federal and state level, but then having to go ahead and act just like I had all those rights and benefits?
Right. No, that, I mean, that's exactly what we're doing. I mean, it's not required by the state law. The city doesn't have to include domestic partners in those, in that definition. But, you know, the thinking is, you know, somebody's just as likely to be influenced by a conflict that arises because of a domestic partner than what is passed.
And so in the financial reporting, I will be required to file all of the interests of my domestic partner?
Right.
Yep. And what I'm tempted to say is, I want to go there. On the other hand, damn it, if you don't give me the legal rights, why am I having to do this? Like, make it contingent upon when there is marriage equality in Maryland, or there is federal marriage equality, or something that, you know, it's like
Right. No, it's definitely a, that's not required. That's a policy decision that you all can make.
And it's like, I don't want to argue against, you know, the disclosure, on the other hand, damn it. Don't go there yet.
Bruce, is it an ethical issue in this case?
Mm-hmm.
So it's identifying a person that would have, you know, that would have influence over you or you have influence over them?
I agree.
The ethical part of it.
Yes. So it's just
Yeah, it's pretty unfortunate. I agree.
Councilmember Wright.
The other thing that's ethical, too, in many people's minds.
Yeah, I agree. I'd be open to considering some language, actually, that says, "upon which people are granted the right to marriage," or something like that. I'd be open to that language.
Because in the eyes of the state and the eyes of the federal government, in many ways, we're legal strangers unless we draw up legal instruments to make ourselves not legal strangers.
Yeah, I'd be open to discussing that.
Well...
That wasn't my question. My question has, I just want to clarify what's required of, because there's a lot here, and even though I did read it beforehand, I'm not totally smart enough to say for all the points yet. What does it mean for people who get appointed to commissions or task forces or those sorts of things? Do they have to do financial disclosure or file a form about conflict of interest? My sense is they didn't have to do financial disclosure, but maybe they had to file some other form? They have to disclose gifts that they receive from people who are coming to their agencies, certainly, or their commission.
Sorry, people...
They have to disclose gifts from people who come before their commissions, and then...
Only gifts that, not gifts that their neighbor might have given them?
Right.
Okay. And that's the only thing they have to disclose?
Yes. I think if a...I think if a, if a known conflict comes up in a matter they're dealing with, then they would have to disclose that if they're going to go ahead and deal with it. I think the way it normally works is, they just don't get put on a panel that's going to hear a dispute involving somebody they know.
Right, but it's a relatively low burden. I was getting a little bit worried that we might be requiring...it's already hard enough to get volunteers for commissions. We might be requiring a burden to...
No, we're only making it hard on elected officials.
My second question is, in Section 11, Section 3 at the top, does that, that applies to council members, right, not just city staff? The provision about not representing some other party or being on the other side of a case contract or other matter involving the city, or does that apply to council members also?
I'm sorry, what page do you want?
Sorry, page 11, the top of the page, 3, number 3, "person formerly held a position covered by this chapter." Does that include elected officials?
Yes.
So this is just hypothetical. Somebody could be on the city council, be dealing with a city related to tax duplication, then be elected at the county council or state legislature, and be on a, in a position that's dealing with the matter from some other side than the city, and be in conflict of the law. So how does that, is there some exclusion for positions of other elected office, or can there be? Do we have the flexibility to write something in there about that? Or maybe I'm misinterpreting that?
No, I think you raise a good point, and that's certainly not something that's occurred to me before. And I'm not sure how much flexibility we have on that, but I'll try to, I'll give that some thought.
Okay.
I don't know. I don't know. I have an answer to that right now.
Councilmember Robinson.
I have two things. One, on that same point, number 11, it is broadly worded, and it almost seems like if you do anything, I guess you made the point of specific matter before, and I don't know if that, the meaning is that it has to be on a specific, on a specific matter, but it's almost as if you, you understand how cities work, and then therefore you can't do anything that has to do with a city. If you catch my drift, you can't get compensated in any way unless you draw it as specific matter, but, so...
Right. I mean, the two qualifiers are that whether it's the matter, and whether it's the same matter, and whether you significantly participated in it, but...
It seems very broadly drawn, and it looks, it almost looks like it would preclude a person who served on the council from doing anything that had to do with a city. And that's how it strikes me. But, and so that's, I know you're going to be looking at that. The other, the other point I wanted to make, and I'm sure you'll work with Jesse on this, the language on page 15 about the timing, and there's this notion of certificate of nomination, then there's the date of April 30 thrown around in 2B, and then down in 4, there's this withdrawing 30 days before the last day for withdrawal of candidacy. If the statement is not received within 20 days, then the person is assumed to not be running. That's how I'm reading that. And then on number 6, you're going to forward all these, all this information to the commission within 30 days. And given, in our, in the context of Tacoma Park, where our entire, from nominating caucus to election is 30 days, that's the whole thing, the whole shooting match. Seems to me that we can't possibly do this unless we move the nominating caucus to September 1 at the latest, or maybe August 1, so that there's enough time to get information to the clerk and then back to the commission, let alone the point that Terry's making about, well, how do you get back and forth from the commission as an elected, either an elected official or someone running for office?
I mean, I would say, and I hear you, that we need to work on the timeline, but it's not, it's not that the commission's job at that point is going to, is to say, you know, "You can't run. You have a conflict of interest." It's more, I think the goal is to make sure your cognizance of potential conflicts and that there's a public record of potential conflicts.
Ah, I understand that. I, yeah, and without belaboring it, I mean, I think I see the April 30 under B and C, 2B of C. They're assuming that, that the, either the withdrawal or the state requires statement and the certificate of nomination is at least six months before. That's the assumption in 2A and 2B and C. The assumption seems to me that the nomination is six months before, and so since we have a one-month soup-to-nuts kind of situation here, I don't see how this can apply. I mean, this is for the state and the city to work out, but I don't see how it can apply to this, unless you do some serious redrafting and then more redrafting after the election. I'm skeptical that this can be put in place in some reasonable fashion for this election. I'm just sort of throwing it out there. But I know that we're trying to do our best in good faith and so forth, so I'm sure you and Jesse will work all these details.
Councilmember Clay.
I almost forgot my question. So who's my question? Is there a legal structure for domestic partnerships in the state of Maryland?
Sue could probably answer that better than me.
The answer is yes and no. There's, there is a domestic partnership, basically it's an affidavit that one can file to assert certain benefits, such as health insurance and some tax benefit treatment, which I won't go into the details, but there isn't the overall domestic partnership recognition as there would be in, for example, California or Washington, D.C. However, the city has a domestic partnership law, which is what I sort of was thinking of saying, but I didn't want to interrupt the conversation between the mayor and Ken, that, you know, has, has set its own sort of recognition of a status. And what I think we have done over many, many years, really, the whole time I've been city attorney, is we've been saying that domestic partnership has to be recognized as a family relationship, and we've created some equality to domestic partners and spouses throughout our charter and our code, so that this concept that, but wait a minute, it's not recognized at the state and federal level, might not be the best question to ask as to whether, for purposes of ethics, our city recognizes the status with the same significance as a family member as a spouse is recognized. We have done that in every other case that I know of for many, many years.
Okay, thank you.
And that was the effort that first got me involved in politics in Tacoma Park in about 1990, was going, working with the city attorney to go through and make all of those changes in the code, and there was a task force on family diversity and a number of efforts. And so that's why, in many ways, I hated to bring it up.
But we all agree that we're not quite there yet.
Right. Okay. So we have a number of points that have been brought up that the city attorney, and I guess in concert with the city clerk in particular about the election issues, need to come up with some fairly rapid cogent answers and redrafting, and we're scheduled, I think, to come back to this for first reading next week, because we have to get this done this month. So...
Would it be unethical for us not to do that?
The question has been asked at the state level about, you know, getting these things done, and the, and the, my recollection of the sense of the answer was, you have to show good faith to get it done if you, you know, if it ends up getting done, you know, October 3, or whatever the date is. Nobody's, there's no big hammer that's going to come down on you and a big fine and this, that, and the other thing, but I think, I think we, I think we really want to get it in there by October 1 and have as much of it right as we can do. So, thank you for the efforts thus far, and we look forward to the revisions when you come back soon.
Okay, you're welcome.
Okay. That is our final work session agenda item, and we now will vote to convene in closed session. This is to consult with legal counsel, staff, and consultants regarding the Washington United States Hospital's petition to relocate and to discuss pending or potential litigation, including administrative proceedings before the Maryland Healthcare Commission pursuant to annotated Code of Maryland State Government Article, Section 10-508A7 and 10-508A8. Would somebody like to move?
Second.
It's been moved by council member, I got to write this down on the form, Clay, and seconded by Councilmember Siemens. All those in favor, please raise a hand. It is unanimous, and we will go into closed session, and following that, we will adjourn for the evening.
Are we back upstairs for this?
Mm-hmm.